The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 regular City Council meeting of August 13th, 2025. Welcome to all of you. And Madam Clerk, now would you please call the roll?
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Corr.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Coman.
Here.
Councilmember Bashir Tash.
Thank you. In keeping with Council's resolution, public statements are received at different times depending on the item. I will call on the city clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray next to the podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on today's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you'll be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total, for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I will call for you at the appropriate time. If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you'll be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, hate speech, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the meeting agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received four speaker cards regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda. The first public speakers are Penny Martinez and Mary Lee Schreider.
Thank you. And Madam City Clerk, for the record, Vice Mayor has entered 3:35. Welcome. Please introduce yourself and go ahead.
Sorry, I always forget the process. My name is Penny Martinez. I'm here about the Wreaths Across America, so I'm one of the co-location coordinators along with Mary Lee for Wreaths Across America, which is on December 13th at the Bakersfield National Cemetery, where we honor every veteran interred there with a wreath or menorah. As you may recall, when we came before you at this time last year, there was a very real concern that we were going to come up short on wreaths. However, the Bakersfield community responded magnificently, as always, to our plea to help and donate to more than 7,500 wreaths we needed. The grave of every veteran interred at the Bakersfield National Cemetery was honored with a wreath, remained in place for a full month, so it was a beautiful, poignant sight throughout the holiday season. So I hope you all come and participate. Our community was so incredibly generous, in fact, that it allowed us to bank 1,421 wreaths for this year. We still have, we have on hand 2,158, but we have a significant need. We must secure 5,442 wreaths, more wreaths, so we're kicking off our summer wreath sponsorship event, and we need our City Council's help to succeed. Here's what we are asking our veteran-loving community to do. It costs only $17 to sponsor a wreath, and you may do so by going online to wreathsacrossamerica.org. That's wreathsacrossamerica.org. Type the Bakersfield National Cemetery location in the site's search engine, select the favorite local sponsorship group like the Civil Air Patrol or the Bakersfield Police Department, and order your wreaths. Then mark your calendars for December 13th and plan to join us for the day's opening ceremony at 9:00 a.m. and then laying the wreaths on the gravesites of those who've served. Thank you. And we have some information for each council member.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez and Ms. Schreider. We always appreciate your efforts with this, and what a beautiful event that always is.
It is.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Kendra Ramsey.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Kendra Ramsey. I'm the executive director of the California Bicycle Coalition. We advocate for the everyday bicyclist in the state capital. And we're here in Bakersfield today in partnership with Bike Bakersfield and many of the other bicycling groups and community members who ride bikes to sort of respond to the grand jury report that came out in May about the proliferation of bike lanes and making many unfounded statements that people don't bike, that it's too hot in Bakersfield to bike, and that bike lanes aren't a good use of public resources. And we gathered several dozen people earlier this afternoon for a bike ride and a discussion about bicycling. More than 30% of community members across the country can't drive. People need a way to get to their destinations every day, and bicycling is a way that many people get around. So having safe bike facilities throughout our communities, including Bakersfield, is very important. We know that there was a tragic death yesterday of a bicyclist in Bakersfield, and we are encouraged that the city does have an updated bike plan, that there are efforts underway to put more bicycle lanes throughout Bakersfield. We support those efforts and would like to see more. We thank Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Arias, who both came to speak to the community at our event and really just wanted to be out here to say bicycling is a very important part of the Bakersfield community. We saw many people, from small children to older adults, at our event earlier. And, you know, we really are here to say that thank you for the efforts so far. We'd love to see more. And I think there are a few other bicyclists that'll speak as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ramsey. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Eddie Lane.
I'm Eddie Lane. I'm with the Sierra Club. The issue is trees, and we've had a lot of publicity recently. Here was a community voice. There's Dr. Lauer's picture, which looks much better than a lot of us, talking about the value of trees. And then we were pleased to see an opinion piece in The Californian last Sunday, and this is what it says. "The lack of trees along major city streets and highways, neighborhood roads, private residences is not just an eyesore, it's a health hazard and erodes Bakersfield's quality of life." Now, we didn't put those words together. That came from The Californian, and we're of course pleased to see that. Looking ahead a little bit, what we have, what's being passed out now, thank you, Vice Mayor Corr, we are with the Vice Mayor, co-sponsoring another tree dialogue. We had been here before talking about that. This has to do with the Heat Island Effect. This one will be August 28th at 2:00. You'll be getting more information in your email basket, but if ever there was a time to look at the Heat Island Effect and strategies that can be used to deal with, now is the time. And then one other commercial, we're a part of a subcommittee of the Recreation and Parks District, and we've sent around a series of recommendations, and we have had broad community involvement in those recommendations, from people like Bill Cooper, Vice President of the Kern River Parkway Foundation, Dennis Kearns, he retired from Bureau of Land Management, Steve Montgomery, our chair, and we are hoping those recommendations get passed along through the process. There's been a little hiccup, so we're going to hope that hiccup can be resolved. But we're here for a commercial. We look forward to your participation, your assistance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Cindy Para.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I am Cindy Para. I am from Bike Bakersfield, and I am here again. As stated earlier, we had a little community meeting today of folks that want to continue to encourage the city to put in more bike lanes, to look at every tool in the toolbox that there is as far as buffered bike lanes, protected bike lanes, bike lanes on canals, just everything that we can do, that the city can do to make our seats safer. As stated earlier, there was a tragic collision yesterday morning. We like what the city is doing as far as putting down the green paint, the bigger, wider bike lanes, but we can continue to do better, and Bike Bakersfield is here to collaborate with the city. We have some folks here that were at the meeting. We're going to do a little bike ride afterwards around downtown and continue the conversation, and we are encouraging them all to speak to you, council members, as to where they see problem areas in their neighborhoods. We all belong to all these neighborhoods. We traverse through from the west side to the east side, and just want to encourage the council to keep moving in that right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Para. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Zach Griffin.
I'm able to print up a couple of copies of what I sent you guys in emails, in case you want a couple of hard copies.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Yes, Zachary Griffin, special education teacher here in Kern County, as well as advocate with Kern Cycling Coalition. Thank you again for the opportunity to follow up. I'd sent an email out a couple of days ago in regards to my time here. And so again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to share these documents with you. I want to piggyback on what fellow cycling advocates have just already sort of said. There was a tragic death of a gentleman who actually, once I saw his face, recognized Cecil, who passed away here, Walker, who passed away here yesterday morning. Unfortunately, we can do better. I don't want to spend too much time looking in the past, but kind of emphasizing on what we can do to improve this. These are actual lives. This man was a 20-year cyclist, doesn't look like the kind of guy who runs stop signs and kind of looks like just a regular Joe. I'm familiar with that intersection. You got a clear view of left and right. So that said, nobody can retrospectively look back at what happened, and I know that Cecil can't tell his story anymore. So he doesn't get to even refute any claims. But getting to the larger scope, obviously, a lot of us are talking about the grand jury report, and in my letter, I want to, which I won't go through, you guys have access to that, you can read it directly. But our overall understanding of health is that healthy people are more productive, they're happier, and that's exactly what our communities all want. Whether you live in Ward 5 or you live in Ward 1, you want healthier, happier community members. Having access to active transportation allows them to move about freely. It allows them to proactively deal with their health issues in case we're not aware of what goes on here in Kern County. The traffic issues are really kind of minor if you look at the obesity and the obesity-related issues that come along with sedentary lifestyles. So we need to get our kids and our community members, and those of us who have kids, we know that the kids are the ones who lead us out the house. So making it comfortable for mom makes it comfortable for everybody. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
Mayor Go, we have not received any additional speaker cards for non-agenda items, nor have we received speaker cards for agenda item public statements.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith. I don't have any requests. Oh, okay. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you.
Do we have a technology issue? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say I did attend the meeting with the community group, and I was the bad guy. I thought I was a good guy, but I represent the city of Bakersfield, and the city of Bakersfield does not make them feel safe every day. They feel their lives threatened, their children's lives threatened, and they understand the streets of Bakersfield are not safe and want something to happen, and happen faster than what is happening. So I'm just relaying that message. I know, you know, I've been here a long time, and I try to say it, but I don't have young kids. I do have grandkids, and there is an urgent need to make Bakersfield safer, and I hope that we feel that urgency and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. I don't have any requests. Did you?
I'm trying to.
Okay. Councilmember Gonzalez.
My apologies, Mayor. My button is not working. I do want to echo the point that Councilmember Smith just made, in that there is a sense of urgency when it comes to pedestrian safety, bicycle safety in our streets. I think what Zach just did was probably one of the most powerful things that we can do as a community in telling the stories of those who have lost their lives and naming those individuals and communicating with the public who they were and who their families are, because I think too often, the public in general is very quick to dismiss many of these tragic deaths. And it's almost in a very callous way, and it's almost second nature for so many folks. I just had a conversation with someone last week who was complaining to me about green paint and complained to me about some of the bicycle lanes. And it's a common refrain, things that I hear from the community all the time, complaints about certain infrastructure improvements. And when I point to the fact that Bakersfield ranks pretty high in terms of pedestrian and bicycle fatalities, they dismiss it and say, oh, but it's just transient. First and foremost, as though a life of a person experiencing homelessness is less than anyone else who has a home. Never mind that premise, but just the way that they dismiss those individuals. And then I share with them some of the stories of our community members who've lost their lives. And just one by one, their attitude shifts dramatically. And so I think what we need to do is do a better job at telling those stories, communicating with the broader public as well, in terms of who really is dying and what really is the scope of the problem in our community, as we continue to press upon city staff and our traffic engineers and everyone else who makes these decisions day in and day out to improve our infrastructure. But I just want to thank all of the advocates for continuously working on this issue. I know it's frustrating. I know there's a lot of angst and fear, but I want to encourage us all to continue to push, continue to fight, and God willing, we'll get better at this. Thanks.
Thank you. And Councilmember Coman.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to change gears a little bit and get back to Mr. Lane's comments about trees. And I had an incident that happened in the last week or so. And the reason I waited is because Assistant Manager Rick Anthony entered the room. So I know that's his bailiwick, the tree thing, but I was traveling down Gosford, and I noticed that somebody had hacked up some trees along Gosford. And so, you know, I immediately called Public Works and go, hey, send somebody out there to stop them guys from hacking up those trees. And Mr. Anthony did respond, sent some people. Turns out, we don't control those trees in our right of ways and not in every place. In that case, we don't have any control of that. And the comment was made that, you know, it's part of a future thing that they want to do. And so the point I'm trying to make is I would like to have an update. We've heard Mr. Lane come here week after week, and we really haven't heard a response from staff. And I know you're working on it, and you have a committee and all that, but I think from my perspective, I'd like to hear what we are doing to improve our tree coverage in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Coman. And Madam City Clerk, just for the record, Councilmember Bashir Tash entered 2:53. I know we had a very, very bad traffic issue. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
I think somebody dropped another card for public comment.
Don't see any. Madam Clerk?
James Teed.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Council. Thank you for your time. The city of Helsinki, Finland, celebrated 2024 with zero fatalities in traffic. Nobody died. No one. No fathers, no mothers, no daughters, no sisters, no wives, no husbands. No one died. Shouldn't that be the goal? Shouldn't that be where we're headed? We accept that a certain number of people just die every day, not just cyclists, not just pedestrians, but motorists too. How do we accept that? How do you look at citizens and say, some of you will die this year, so that you can get somewhere two minutes faster? Mayor Go, you visited my shop last year, and you signed a proclamation saying that Kern County would be the fittest county in California. What have we done to get there? Perhaps people don't cycle, don't walk, because they don't feel safe. I know I don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teed. Madam Clerk, any other? Okay, this is going to be the last public speaker card. We are finished with this part. Madam Clerk?
Rachel Williams.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Rachel Williams. I think this one affects me the most, this whole issue with the city and our infrastructure, mostly because I have kids. I love cycling, but it isn't just about me. And I think that's the problem with our community, with the board members, with just everybody who makes the votes and the decisions on what we do and where we disperse our money and how we keep our city safe. I understand that there's only so much funding. I understand that things need to be spread out everywhere. That's life in regards to everything. But when it comes to our children, these things should take precedence. And when our city employees can't even follow rules or keep our bike lanes safe, I mentioned it in the meeting we had earlier, we have city employees parking the vehicles that are blocking bike lanes and especially close to the school, where students would be riding their bikes, walking. I can't send my kids to school riding their bike. So what is the point of a bike lane if my kids can't even use it, if I can't even use it to get to the store, run an errand, and keep, you know, them in a safe bike lane? Why are you even building them? I mean, think about it. Somebody's got to hold these rules and hold everybody accountable. So that's something I want you to think about, is what would you allow for your child, for your niece, your nephew, your grandkids? Are you going to allow them to have to forego the safe traveling that they could take? All because your employees can't follow rules? Because you think money needs to go somewhere else? Who's going to replace you, you know? Think about that.
Ms. Williams, thank you for your comments. Madam Clerk, next item, please. And for the record, Councilmember Weir entered at 3:56. We have a full council.
Reports item 3A, potential amendment to charter to increase council salary.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll give a minute for the clerk to pull that up. Jenny Gennaro, your city attorney, I will be talking this afternoon on a potential charter amendment as it concerns your salaries. And just keep in mind, as I go through this, and I will try to be brief, given the time, that the city of Bakersfield is a charter city as compared to a general law city. So when we see something in our charter or our constitution, as it's known, the only way to change, if there's something in the charter that we desire to change or that the council desires to change, is if we go to a vote of the people. And so what I am showing you right now on your screen is Section 18 of the city charter. You can see how it reads. And before that asterisk was there, changing it to $100 a month, and I'll go through that in just a minute, the first salary of all of our council members was $50. And that was actually done when the charter was ratified early in 1915, during the, right after the general election of 1914. As you can see here, these are the salaries of the top 10 cities as well as our survey cities. These numbers have been updated since the last time that this presentation was given. There, you can see there is no question at all that the city of Bakersfield has substantially the lowest base salary of all 10 cities, top 10 cities, as well as survey cities. Again, I want to emphasize, this is the monthly base salary for council members in all cities, from LA down to Anaheim, and it does not, repeat, does not include any additional benefits, whether that be insurance benefits, car payments, cell phones, et cetera. This is an apple-to-apple comparison. So how did we get here tonight? A little bit of history, particularly for our newest council members. This has been a topic that we have discussed for the last three years, and it really started back in 2022, when council made a referral to the city manager's office to do an overall charter review, not just with council salaries, but on other items throughout the charter. And in 2023, your council authorized the use of the outside consultant, Moss Adams, to conduct that charter review. Moss Adams completed that review in June of 2023 and came before you and gave that presentation. And it was after that presentation that there was a referral directly to the city attorney's office to come back and give a more focused presentation on specifically council salaries. That was done on August 9th of 2023. That presentation was received and filed. We had thought at that time, back in 2023, that maybe the council would be interested in moving forward to the special primary election in March of 2024. But in 2024, the city manager did, I would call a supplemental, review of the Moss Adams charter review presentation. And again, during 2024, there was a referral from one of your colleagues directly to the city attorney's office to, again, come back and give another update on council salaries and what could be done to increase that particular number. I came back the very next meeting on Valentine's Day in 2024. We had, I think, a very positive discussion. And again, you can see here what the, what the motion was at the end of that evening. At the time, it was Vice Mayor Gonzalez's motion. He wanted us to work with key stakeholders, and I think more importantly, he amended his motion, which passed, that staff was to bring the item back. And then we were working towards a November 2026 timeline and not a 2024 timeline. The timeline at the time that I talked about prior to that motion being given, in essence, was that I would complete that presentation to the stakeholders, and I'm going to give you a list of those stakeholders in just a minute. And then I would come back to you in the spring of 2025, give you a little bit of feedback, and in August of 2025, the council would have a recommendation from the stakeholder group. I think, I don't think, I know that the concept when we talked about it was that, again, going to the various stakeholders, we were hoping that there would be at least a couple of individuals, maybe from different groups that are there on your screen, or maybe there was one particular entity that wanted to form a grassroots type of committee and, for lack of a better word, kind of champion which direction that group decided to go. And it would give the council some positive feedback, so you'd get a pulse, so to speak, as to where the community was instead of just perhaps acting in a vacuum. These are the stakeholders that I sent letters to, and again, for the, perhaps not for council members, Coman and Bashir Tash, but all of you did receive courtesy copies of those letters when they went out. If you see a date to the right of the stakeholder, that is the date in which I made the presentation to the entity. If there is no date, neither the bottom three stakeholders really responded in terms of when they wanted me, when they wanted me to have that presentation, and so no presentation was made to them. There were at least two letters, two invitation letters, that went out to those last three stakeholders. I would tell you that I felt that the presentation I would tell you that I felt that the presentations were well received. Many people came up to us later and said, thank you for the information. It was very educational. But no one has really come up at this point and said, we feel strongly one way or the other, or what that amount should be. So I would tell you, at this point, there does not seem to be a champion, so to speak, that's going to come forward to you and say, this is what we think that you should do. So again, for the benefit of our newer council members, just a quick recap of history. I'm not going to read all of them. But in 1947, so again, keep in mind that the $50 was on the books in 1914. In 1947, there was actually an amendment to actually not even pay you $50. That failed. 1954, there was an ordinance that was sent to the voters to increase it to $200 a month. That failed. 1956 is when we had the ordinance to actually increase it to $100 a month. That was successful. That was actually done at a special election. And not only did it change the charter with the asterisk, but it also then added an ordinance or it added a code section to the Bakersfield Municipal Code under 2.68. That last part there, that last bullet, is really antiquated. Back then, council members used to go to Board of Equalization and Budget meetings. That is no longer the case. But that was also added to the code at that time, not to, I guess, what was it? It was $20 per day if you were sitting on that particular board. So again, just to repeat, that is why the Charter section, Section 18, that is why it reads the way it reads at this time. In 1988, there was yet another attempt to change it. This time, they kind of, the council changed directions. And they, instead of going monthly, they tried an annual, $6,000. That failed. In 1990, they went back to see if they could go $700 a month, and that also failed. So quick recap there, just by looking at that chart, you can see that there have been five attempts to amend the charter. One has passed. I would tell you that I think at first blush, sometimes people look at that and they say, well, it's pretty clear, you know, that taxpayers here in the city don't want council members to make more money. I would also tell you that I think the other argument to be made, particularly looking at 1947, right? You were at 50, and there was an attempt to take it down to zero. It's not so much perhaps the amount, but people are very close to their charter. And it's very difficult sometimes to get that charter changed, regardless of sometimes what it is, whether the amount's going up or the amount is going down. Some new information that I don't believe that we had discussed before, but I did bring it up in some of the presentations. There is a state law. It's Government Code 36516. And it allows cities basically to enact ordinances concerning council pay. It is done by way of population. And obviously, we have more than 250,000. That is the top tier in that government code. And so if you have more than $250,000, the government code allows the council to go to 300, I'm sorry, $3,200 per month. You cannot increase that, or, excuse me, you can only increase it as long as you meet those parameters there of those two tabbed bullets. I'm not going to go into that right now because I think that's really going down the rabbit hole. I think what is important is that that government code is there. And we're going to talk about that a little bit more. That would be $3,200 a month. A year, it would be $38,400. If you multiplied that by seven, I'm at approximately $268,000, if my math is correct. If that were to apply to this city council, you could not have an ordinance that would allow for an automatic increase. You would have to come back. But you would not have to go to the voters if you, again, were able to get this on the books and get your charter changed. And what do I mean by that? I'm going to go through that. Leaves you really with four options as we see it. Option number one, you can leave everything alone. You don't have to do anything. The fiscal impact is clearly zero. Number two, you can add a new salary. That fiscal impact is to be determined, plus the election costs. I'm going to go through that in the next slide. Number three, you could delete the charter language that we've discussed, and you could delete the Bakersfield Municipal Code that was done in 1956. And you could come back later. You could come back later and do an ordinance, as we've just discussed. Or you could come back and you don't have to keep the $3,200 a month. You could put in whatever amount you wanted to. So again, the fiscal impact on that is really to be determined. But you would still have to do an election cost because you would have to delete it from the charter and delete it from the Bakersfield Municipal Code. You could also just simply change your charter, as well as the ordinance, and you could follow state law, meaning use the default amount, which is the $3,200 a month. Again, I've already calculated that for you in terms of the fiscal impact, which is the $270,000 plus the election costs. Going to go through this, but if you were to do option number one, obviously, you're going to leave everything alone. Fiscal impact is zero. That's what the charter says, and that's what the Bakersfield Municipal Code currently says. Option number two, you'd have to add a new salary. Again, we've kind of been down this road before, and there was reluctance to really put in a new amount, which is, I think, why you directed me to go out to the stakeholders. But we could go to the voters with something like this. But you would have to tell me what the new amount is. If you don't want 100, you need to let me know what amount you want me to put in. Whatever amount I put in is the fiscal impact plus the election costs. Option number three is to delete everything. You would go to the voters and you'd say, look, I just wanted to delete everything so we can just kind of kick the bucket down the road and deal with this later. You would still need to go to the voters, and you would tell them that this is what we want you to pass. And you would line everything out. You would line it out of the charter, and you would line it out of the Bakersfield Municipal Code. The only thing there really in terms of fiscal impact, right, is the election costs. You'd actually have a little bit of a savings, right? Because none of you then would even collect your $100. So you'd have a $700 savings until you enacted a new ordinance and had it passed. That ordinance that you pass, if the voters approve this on option number three, you don't need the voters to approve an ordinance. You're going to do that by yourself. You would do a first reading and a second reading. Option number four, again, is to follow state law, again, through a charter amendment and an ordinance. What you would do is you would line out Section 18, the current one, and you would put something like this to the voters. Again, this is not in concrete. If we're going to do something like this, which is why I'm coming to you tonight, we have to be very precise with our language. And so I'm going to have to go back and really reflect on it and think about how it should read. But in essence, it would say that effective January of 2027, the salaries of the council members shall be $3,200 per month, and it may increase in accordance with that Government Code Section 36516 as it may be amended from time to time. I selected January 1 of 2027. You can select any date you so choose. As long as the voters approve it, it's fine. Again, the Municipal Code Section 2.68 would have to mirror, in essence, what the voters approve in the charter. But that's how it would look, again, in concept. The fiscal impact, as I say, is at the bottom there. Again, a very, very preliminary sample ballot measure. This is perhaps how it would look. The voter would see, shall the Bakersfield City Charter and the Bakersfield Municipal Code be amended to provide that effective? Again, I have January 2027. Salaries of city council members shall be set in accordance with state law at $3,200 per month and shall only be increased per state law. That is something that, again, conceptually works. If this is something that you want to do, I need to know so that I can perfect that language. Let's just talk a little bit about costs. Election costs really are within the bailiwick of the city clerk. She has graciously provided me with two slides to guide you on this. Election costs fluctuate apparently on several factors. The number of measures, as you can imagine by any other city within the county, right? Because we consolidate our elections with the county of Kern. Again, and printing costs for the measures. So how many words we use in that ballot and how many lines I'm going to use in the book that comes to all voters, that gives them, that tells them what's coming up and a pro and con on the impartial analysis and arguments. So again, the printing costs can be, again, variable. Just to give you an idea of what the city clerk has been looking at, she went back to 2018. And again, I think really what's critical here is just look at the far right column. We still do not have a bill yet on the 2024 election. But the clerk is estimating, based on her preliminary costs with the county and again, based on history, that if we were to go to an election, again, for the sole purpose of changing Section 18 in the charter, we're looking at a cost of about $475,000 upwards to five and a quarter, half a million. And remember, that is no guarantee that the charter amendment is going to pass. That money would be spent, period, end of discussion. If you decide to move forward on this, this is somewhat of a draft election calendar. But I really, again, need to know that this is what you want to do or what you want to do so my staff and I can start working on exactly how the ordinance should read. You know that when we did Measure N and when we did some of these other measures, we were very specific. Many of you helped, obviously, with getting the new police change on the charter. Remember, I came back to you at least three or four times to really iron that language out. So even if you were to decide to move forward today, I'm going to be back in front of you at least three more times to really get a comfort level as to where you are on that ballot language and how that new charter should read. But you will call for the consolidation of the election in June of '26. In August, again, we're going to have to submit all the materials to the county. Obviously, the election is in November, and then the results are declared in December. So I'm going to, I'm open for any questions or directions, but I do want to just leave this in front of you for discussion. I am hoping that I get direction from you tonight as to which option you are inclined to take. Leave as is, add a new salary, delete the charter and the BMC language, or, again, follow state law. And items two, three, and four, again, will require a charter amendment.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak from the public?
Mayor Go, we have not received any speaker cards.
Thank you. Councilmember Bashir Tosh.
I would like to make a motion adopting number one, leaving it as is.
Are there any other requests to speak? Seeing none, you have a motion. Please catch your vote.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Core voting no.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, next item, please.
Close session, item 4A, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6.
Thank you.
Motion adjourned to close session.
Would adjourn. Reconvening the 3:30 city council meeting. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. We had one item on closed session this afternoon. Item 4A, city staff was given direction by a split vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And we, having no further business, stand adjourned at 5:40.